The October 27th Special Meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. Present, we have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Lieber. We're also joined by the Superintendent of Schools, Mike Cummings. I ask you all to please rise for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the reason for this special meeting is to hear public comment on the October 27th regular meeting agenda. For those that are tuning in, the Board of Education has been meeting, we were meeting virtually on October, I mean, April through the beginning of September, and have been meeting, the Boards have been meeting in person since September, but we have not been able to have live public comment due to the executive order and the health restrictions. So, we are trying to have call-in public comment today, just to test it out. So, I'm asking for everybody's patience, because this is new. We're trialing it out. There was a reservation form that public, the public could register online to give comment tonight. We're going to hopefully get through everybody. For anyone who does not, is not able to give comment tonight, I do apologize, but you can still submit written public comment via the form on the Board of Ed website, as well as emailing to publiccomment@fairfieldschools.org. And with that information, we will get right down to it. So, our first caller is Ann Harvey, with the number ending 9398. We're going to give two minutes per public comment. So, Ms. Harvey, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Regarding the opening plans update, I support our superintendent, the district, and the Board of Education always, even when I might not personally agree every time. I am not shy about advocacy. I can also start a petition and get hundreds of signatures, but the integrity of the process matters most to me. We do not make decisions based on majority rule. We don't all raise our hands town hall style to vote on any number of matters affecting our schools. Roles for the public, the district, and town boards are built in by charter. It works. We've had folks from special interest groups attempt to change this in the past. That's dangerous. Majority vote by special interest laypersons is not the way to run a school district. This district and board are fully transparent and accountable. Our voices are being heard, notwithstanding demands for particular information or outcome. The public can swap articles, studies, metrics, and play armchair epidemiologists, but public health and science are guiding our professionals. I hear people lending credence to the disgraced Great Barrington Project, to forced protection, code word for herd immunity. I even hear it stated publicly that the elderly might be culled. Herd immunity is not public policy. That's why people won't admit they support it. Herd immunity is death to a minimum of 2 million Americans, including my 90-year-old Korean War veteran father, who is not willing to take it for the team. I understand passions are high and the concerns are real, but people feel free to make unfounded allegations in writing, demeaning individuals and professionals who are working tirelessly. The meanness I read is shameful. There is no deep state here, only principled citizens and educators serving our town. Please let them do their job, whether it is to your individual liking. Turn your anger to its rightful place. The federal government's lack of policy is how we got here. We have a truly great superintendent. We don't always have to agree, but stop, please, with the abuse. Who will work here otherwise? This is a wonderful town. Let's keep it that way. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that comment, Ms. Harvey. Just for the record, Ms. Pitco has joined us. Also, just for the public's knowledge, the Board is hearing comment. We just don't respond to public comment, and that is just our normal practice, even pre-pandemic during our regular meetings. So, the next caller is Kristen Tharrington, number ending 7119.
This caller has not called in yet.
Okay, thank you. We will come back to Ms. Tharrington later, if there's time. The next caller is Cynthia Waldron, number ending 6255.
Hello. Thank you all for taking this time. I appreciate it. Want to start off by saying that, you know, as much as this is a cliche to say, we are in a pandemic, it is unprecedented. It is naive of us to set a plan that is not fluid and not able to change the dynamics, as the disease also changes, not only how it affects us personally, but as a community. I believe you have all the best intentions of the community and the kids, and I do not envy your position. I thank you all for your due diligence that you have done and continue to do to give our students a safe environment to learn. I also thank you for your continued communication. It helps mitigate my anxiety and promotes a trusting collaboration. We have to be able to iterate based on the facts on hand, which are constantly changing. I feel the Board of Ed, superintendent, administration, teachers, and staff have done an amazing job in getting our kids back to school in a safe manner. I encourage our entire community to stop using absolute language and try instead to work together, be patient, and trust that our district is doing everything in their power to get our children in school full-time. And I do hope that in doing that, we do use the metrics that you guys have been using, and I thank you deeply for doing that and trusting in the science. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Waldron. For the record, Mrs. Maxicanelli has joined the meeting. Moving on to the next caller, Katie Flynn, phone number ending 1491.
This caller is also not here. Once I've semi-doubled-checked, it came in since then. No, they are not here currently.
Okay, we will move on to the next caller, Kim Grant, number ending 0379.
This caller is also not called in?
Thank you. Moving on, Kelly McWinnie, 2218.
This caller has also not called in.
Okay, moving on to the next caller, Kristen Frame, number ending 3746.
This caller is here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Frame.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. I have three children in the school district, one elementary and two middle school. I respect the Board's advocacy very much and Mike's interest in keeping children safe. Thank you for the countless hours you've spent working on this, but with due respect, I feel we're going in circles and not moving the ball forward. We're not asking you to be reckless, but our healthcare reality in spring versus now is not even comparable. Somehow, flatten the curve has turned into eliminate the disease. It isn't going away, but we can manage risk. We've seen that by the lack of transmission in schools. What we can't manage is the mental, emotional, developmental, and educational harm we're causing these kids. When we have flattened the curve and less than 5% of the state's hospital beds are COVID-related, I have a really, really hard time understanding what the heck we're doing. We're using metrics to shut down the plan for school, but there are no metrics to justify a return for today's communication. My work background includes managing performance, and the cardinal rule of goal management is that a goal must meet three criteria. One, it's specific. Two, it's measurable. Three, it has a timeframe. None of these is present in what's been laid out for moving into full-time. It is undefined and ambiguous. If our criteria is open to interpretation, we could be waiting months to go to school. I'm also unsure how we can possibly complete the curriculum in the hybrid model. I see two of my kids falling behind, having difficulty engaging, and often doing well below what they are capable of. The one I see struggle the most is a middle-schooler who is a gifted program student. It's truly heartbreaking. And knowing that so many other children in our county, state, and country are being allowed their full education and not falling behind, it's hard to swallow. And what we're asking of our teachers is unfair. They have two to three times the workload and aren't in a position to do their job well or effectively. These are wonderful teachers, and I would hate to lose them. When we have a larger community in restaurants, casinos, and nail salons, and we can't find a way to get our kids into a school, we have some serious priority issues. Thank you very much.
Ms. Van, I mean, thank you for your comment. Sorry to cut you off. Next caller, Eileen Sekera, number ending 3691.
So, this caller was on. It's not anymore. Yeah, that, I mean, the stuff that what I'm doing now, I'm just labeling people as they come in based on our list. But, yeah, they're not notified when they call in that they're in a queue. They're just on, they can just hear you guys talking.
So, if people are calling in and not getting in, just hang on? Okay.
If you're calling in, if you are a registered caller...
Kristen just called in just now.
If you're a registered caller...
Number two, Kristen Tharrington.
And you call in, you will hear the meeting.
Oh, hello?
Hello.
Oh, hi. Okay, I'm sorry. Hi, Kristen Tharrington. So, to start, I'd just like to thank the members of the Board of Ed, Superintendent Cummings, and all of the administration and staff of Fairfield Public Schools, who have been working under incredulous circumstances to keep our children safe and learning throughout this time. As an engaged citizen, as well as a former president of both elementary and middle school PPAs, I've witnessed firsthand various debates over the years, from budgets and capital planning waterfalls, elementary math curriculums, you know, to whether or not climate control should be included in building renovation. It has always been my experience that Fairfield Public Schools and the Board of Ed have operated transparently and welcomes the viewpoint of various stakeholders with various viewpoints during these times. I've both agreed and disagreed with the eventual outcomes throughout the years, but it has been my opinion that our school professionals and experts, and in our current case, our health professionals, are best suited to make the ultimate policy recommendations and decisions concerning our students' learning. Again, I feel very strongly the same today. Our professionals are in our schools, on our devices, and with our children every day. They're liaising with the state on matters of both education and public health. While I certainly believe that we, as residents, along with our Board of Ed, seek clarification on the rationale behind decision-making and hold our school district accountable, I am inclined to believe that it is, in fact, our professionals who have the skills and expertise to be making these critical decisions. As others have stated before me, I urge all residents, whether we agree with the ultimate decisions or not, to continue to treat our professionals with the respect that they deserve and have earned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tharrington. Just, we're going to go back to Eileen Sekera, if she's on the line. Okay, hearing none. We'll move...
I'm sorry, Eileen Sekera.
I'm sorry, 3691. She wasn't on before.
She is not on the 12th currently.
Okay, we'll swing back, if there's time. Next caller, Kelly Dunn, number ending 6046.
Received the email today, and make sure that all parents read it, because it's fairly detailed, and it covers pretty much K through 12 in terms of the plan for the future going forward, to the extent that Mike Cummings can discuss it at this time. I want to thank you guys, all Board of Ed, administration, Mike Cummings, all those in public health in the town of Fairfield, and those who have been trying so hard to keep the contact tracing going. It's very difficult. Thank you for keeping our children safe. Thank you for the hybrid model. Thank you for cohorting, because I think that's kept the number, the numbers down, the infection rate down, and it's helping everybody to keep, at least keep going. And I think we need to be thankful and grateful for that in and of itself. And that's pretty much what, you know, I wanted to make sure I said tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. The next caller, Matt Hutzelman, number ending 2092.
Tangible numbers? Hello? But the, I think part of the problem is the damages, loss of education, the isolation, the dependency, cause are intangible. How long are working parents supposed to handle this? How long can special needs kids handle this? I have kids in each level of the schools, middle, elementary, middle, and high school. Each one is losing something every single day in their own way, but the conveyor belt keeps moving. We're not going to reset this. We're not going to go back and redo the school. Each moment lost in remote is a moment never gained back. In budget meetings, I've always been proud to talk about how my family could have chose to live anywhere, but we decided to plant our flag in Fairfield, and in me and many other people. You know, we play a lot in property taxes. We've moved to Fairfield for the schools, and as long as my kids are getting the services they need, that's fine, but right now, they're not getting that. In a lot of cases, at least for my kids, remote learning just doesn't work. And don't kid yourselves. If this continues, the parents are not going to be supportive of the Fairfield Public School budget. Parents and non-parent taxpayers alike will be asking, what are we paying for exactly? We see Dariane, New Canaan, Trumble at or moving to full-time. Why are they allowed, able to do this, but we're not? I mean, Trumble is very close to Fairfield and socioeconomic background. People say, oh, it's not a competition, but my children will be competing against these kids, you know, once they graduate from school, and Fairfield kids are going to be at a disadvantage. They're not learning what they need to learn. And the longer this goes on, the more angry and impatient whatever parents they become, and the less supportive they'll become. There's, there's no light at the end of the tunnel. We were thinking, you know, that we were going to get full-time in whatever, November 9th or whatever it was, and that gets taken away, and it's so despondent, because there's, you're thinking that, all right, maybe we'll round the corner, but how long is this going to last? Are we going to go, you know, now that it's almost November, we're going to probably wait till Thanksgiving, then we'll wait till after. So, it's going to be January. We're going to go through a year of this? I mean, when are the numbers ever going to get better enough that we can say safely, yes, we can completely open up? Again, if other towns can do this, why can't Fairfield? Why can't we, you know, learn to, and the transmission is not happening in schools. Everyone knows it's happening in the universities and outside of schools.
Mr. Hutzelman...
So, I just don't understand why we can't figure out a way for our kids to return full-time the way they need to.
Okay. Mr. Hutzelman, I have to cut. Your time, your time is up. Thank, thank you for your, thank you, thank, thank you, Mr. Hutzelman, for your call and your advocacy. We're moving on to, we're moving on to the next caller. We're going to go back to Kim Grant. I heard she's on the line, 0379.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Kim Grant, and I live at 315 South Pine Creek. Thank you for making the time and effort for public comment. In a time of such upheaval, it is an extremely important part to our democracy. I am pleading with you to reopen our schools to full-time in-person learning. It is in the best interest of our children's academic, social, and mental wellbeing. At the very least, our K-8 kids need to be back in school. Educators are creative by nature. Given the proper guidance and time, I know our wonderful Fairfield teachers could come up with solutions. At the very least, why do we continue to have Remote Wednesdays for the 6th to 12th graders? We can do better for the children of Fairfield. Get these kids back to school. Do whatever it takes. Let teachers work their magic to educate and help them grow into productive citizens of this world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. The next caller is Amy Ruggiero, number ending 6245.
Hi, this is Amy Ruggiero. Thank you so much for taking public comments this evening, and thank you so much for your dedication in all you're doing and for the responses that you've given me so quickly on my emails. I have two children, one in high school, one in elementary school. I feel we should have been open since the beginning of the year. If the data goes back down, I want to open on November 9th as planned, and I would like to understand if that's still possible. If not, I'd like to know what the issues are. If there's a teacher shortage, weren't we prepping for that? We've had weeks. Please tell us what the issues are and also what levers we can use to hire and maybe pick up steam on hiring positions. While we are in the hybrid model, the program needs to be improved. Can we have more live streaming, someone available to help our kids during the day? I think our kids deserve full-time learning. We are not keeping up with the other towns, and the public education in this town is suffering. Private schools are in session full-time, and there's a widening in the gap between the have and have-nots. I am also incredibly concerned about the mental health ramifications, anxiety, depression, kids withdrawing, hating school, falling behind. Parents are also unable to plan, in a lot of cases, unable to work, and they need to be home to help their kids get on the bus, for example, at 12:30, like myself. We need to know the plan. The uncertainty is hurting everybody. I think our children deserve better. I hope that we'll get some answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. Our next caller, Jessica Ayanacony. I apologize if I mispronounced that, the number ending 2855.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I am extremely concerned with any decisions involving health and safety of our students and the staff. For this reason, I believe we should not be sending students back into full person in school. I'm shocked that this is even being discussed. Fairfield cases have been steadily increasing. Now, neighboring towns are also rising. Norwalk, who is also in the red zone, is considering moving into full remote, per the superintendent and their mayor. Wilbon and Westport recently chose to continue on with the hybrid model. Parent frustration should not be a driving force. All parents are frustrated, as none of this is ideal, but the health and safety of our children and our educators should be the top priority. At the last meeting, doctors and medical professionals gave reasons why we should stay hybrid. Their medical opinions are not taken into consideration, yet you're asking for opinions from parents who are not qualified as medical professionals. Currently, Fairfield has been mostly successful at keeping COVID out of the elementary schools, but much of this can be attributed to the current hybrid schedule. Students do not have their masks off indoors for lunch. They do not have music or gym, which are both high in transmission. We all want a return to normal. However, this is not the time, and our schools are not the place. The most effective learning for our children, our learning environment for our children, is a safe and healthy one, and the only way we can do that is by staying hybrid. We may be frustrated with the pandemic, but unfortunately, it is not done with us. And I would just like to take a moment to thank the schools and the teachers for all of their hard work. In March, we considered them heroes, and now they are public enemy number one. And thank you for that.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, Tim Dwyer, number ending 9557.
Yes, thank you. First off, I'd like to thank you all for your leadership in this challenging year. I have a fourth and a first grader at Fairfield School, and my wife and I cannot be more pleased with the teachers and the staff at the school, why we're in Fairfield. Recently, someone shared all the openings of the schools in the surrounding towns to full-time. It is frustrating and disappointing to see Fairfield on this list and one of a few towns that do not have a plan to reopen, starting with lower schools full-time. This community has always been a leader and a beacon for others to model, and I only wish this challenge would be another area for Fairfield to excel. Our community must find a way to make this a top priority, as I feel the alternative to students is students continuing to struggle and fall behind. Why don't we address any of these very concerns to the group? Number one, we need a plan, and we need a plan to execute and stay with it. We will always have new technologies, but we need to continue to push forward and not fall behind. We expect a plan. We expect a plan where there is going to be surprises, but I challenge this group, why is Fairfield not leading to a new system? Number two, we are failing our students. Let's be ourselves. They are falling behind. The emotional and social things that happen to our students, our community, is disturbing, and we will always have the teachers and staff to help us as we move forward, but we must continue to put our students first through this.
Mr. Dwyer, we lost you there towards the end. The connection was bad. So, if you have that comment in writing, I invite you to also just forward it to thepubliccomment@fairfieldschools.org address as well. Thank you for calling in. Our next caller is Brian Svenson, number ending 1359.
Yeah, thank you for taking my call. I'm going to comment on Mr. Dwyer's, what he said. What is the plan? I feel like we were totally in the wrong by preemptively shutting down schools. When our numbers were consistently low, we could have had September, October, we could have been in school for eight-plus weeks right now, and now we're looking at never going back, it seems like, because it seems like people want to wait for a vaccine, which obviously may never come. All right, we have to really think of that. And I can't even equate how much my two daughters' emotional growth is being stunted and their special needs are not being met right now. At least, full-time is the way we have to go. Just today, Boston Health School, Boston University School of Public Business said, "Schools are not super-spreader events." All right, there's nothing. I've looked at the town's metrics, and the median age for COVID cases is 20 years old. This past week, it's 20 years old. That's not the grammar school child. That's not what's happening in this school. All right, I understand these worries about teachers and everything, and those needs could be met, and we have to think outside the box, but Fairfield can't think like that. All right, we need to get a plan in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. Our next caller is Allison Stupak, number ending 3482.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. All right. Good evening, and thank you for taking public comments. I have three children in the Fairfield Public School system. In fact, you can hear two of them in the background. I also work in healthcare, and I have a background in ID, epidemiology, and biostatistics. So, today, my goal is to illustrate why our town has failed us in their plans for reopening schools. This isn't a political agenda or even a personal one. This one's based on scientific studies, data, and risk benefit analyses. Hold on one second. Sorry. This summer, Fairfield retracted their state-guided full-time auction, less than two weeks after Governor Lamont's publication replaced with a hybrid model-only option, citing that even though the health data is low now, they're predicting it won't be in September. As the Board of Ed for this town, you will now be responsible for squandering 10 weeks of full-time instruction in order to play it safe. First, the decision was made disregarding health data, and now, announced today, the health trend data is the only thing driving this decision. This is a complete misuse of power and special interests to drive an arbitrary decision based on what the Board of Ed wants to do, not what they should do. Science evolves through the scientific method, which means study, not opinion. This week, I asked the Connecticut DPH why they switched from county to town indicators, and I got this statement in, and I'll quote it in email. Officially, the Connecticut DPH and Connecticut Department of Education recommend that the county learning model indicators be used for making determinations for school. The town-level data is not primarily used for the school learning model indicators. What politicians have been doing is following what we call, in the scientific community, as pseudoscience, manipulating data that advance their initiatives to special interest groups. U.S. epidemiological evidence has suggested that schools are not super-spreaders. I've heard that from a number of...
Mr. Stupak, I hope you saw, you've reached your...
The case rate for student...
Just finish your thought.
...is lower than the overall case rates in their communities, and the harm to learning and mental health is obvious. Recently, I questioned the safety of in-person choir. So, to the gentleman that said that they have virtual choir, we do have some for schools in the middle school that have in-person choir. Numerous studies indicate choir to be super-spreader, but I was given this response.
Um, Ms. Stupak, I'm sorry, we're going to have to, we're going to have, we're going to have to cut you off. I know you've reached your time limit. I'm sorry. We're moving on to the next caller. Sorry. The next caller is David Sanok, number ending 5662. The next caller is David Sanok, number ending 5662.
David is not on at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next caller is Andrew Grayson, 6934.
This caller is also not on at this time.
Next caller is Michelle Hobart, number ending 8356.
Hi, this is Michelle Hobart. I have two children in Sherman. Thank you so much for allowing this call. Clearly, the children's education is the number-one priority, and that is the first and foremost. The second issue, which is most important, are the parents that take care of these children. Many parents here in Fairfield rely on school as part of the village that helps us as working parents. Many of us work very hard to afford living in this beautiful town. As a business owner, I am pulled in so many directions. I find myself doing the job, not only just of a mother, a business owner, but now an educator, and I am breaking. My husband is working, works from home, and while he's trying to keep up with his work, children are demanding help hogging in. The children are always number one, but when we break as working parents, who will help us help them? It is not our job to take on the responsibility of those who are not willing to work. The system is failing us, all of us in the end. It's not just the children that lose, it's the entire family that loses. Neighboring towns have this support. Where's ours? We were green, no full-time school. What is the plan, and what will it take for us to get the help that we need? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next caller, Elizabeth Vigneux, number ending 7699.
That caller's not on right now.
Moving on, Brittany Sansone, 6061.
That caller's also not on right now.
Okay, moving on. The next caller is Christopher Benedetto, number ending 8996.
That caller's also not on right now.
Thank you. Moving on, Elliot Brenner, number ending 1557.
Hi, this is Elliot Brenner. I have three children in the Fairfield public schools. One is in high school, one is in middle school, and one is in elementary school. I want to thank you guys, all of you, for working so hard and trying your best to manage what is an extremely difficult and novel situation. And I also want to thank you for having this meeting where parents are able to provide input. I have two points I want to make. One is that I encourage you to get more ongoing parent input and to put more parents on the reopening committee. And the second point is, I would encourage you to have clear criteria for returning to full-time in-person school and to be transparent in communicating these to parents and the community. We got a letter today from Mr. Cummings making a decision to call off the return to full-time in-person school for elementary schools, and you said it was based on the cases per 100,000 and the positive test rate. So I'm curious, are these the criteria that are going to be used to return to school? Because that was not made clear in the letter. There was, in fact, it was, you know, very vague, and I think we need very clear criteria that are communicated transparently to parents and the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller, Melissa Miller, 1733.
It'll each just cut out, one second, I'm just over checking. Yes, she did.
All right, we'll come back. Just for the public, if anybody was pre-registered and tried to call in and thought that they weren't in a queue, I would request that if you haven't spoken, to please call back So, and stay on the line, and we will call on you. You just need to stay until we call on you. So hopefully, you're still listening to your neighbor's comments, and you can call The next person we have is Suzanne Parker, 0511.
Hi, yes, this is Suzanne. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, yes. Thanks for taking my call. Greatly appreciate everybody's time and continued effort over the many months, which feels like years, and, you know, primary concern for the health and safety of our children and amazing futures in Fairfield. Communication has been great. You know, I felt in the spring so proud to be part of the Fairfield community. We were so ahead of this. I felt within a week of everything closing down, we had our hybrid, you know, our remote learning in place, and things were going so well. I feel like we're completely behind and really falling very, very short, especially compared to our neighboring states, New York and New Jersey. I have a lot of friends that live there, you know, whether it be full remote, hybrid, or in-person, because they have a combination of all. I feel like Fairfield is falling behind in all of those. You've heard a lot of comments already on the failure for the reopening plan, so I'd like to focus in on the current state of the hybrid model. I noticed that we would be getting an update on the quote-unquote reboot for the middle and high school grades this week. I have two kids in middle school, and, you know, this is, this is my biggest concern, right? I, you know, whatever happens, I really support going back full-time, but if that does not happen, the hybrid model, as it currently stands, is not working. Wednesdays are not virtual learning. More often than not, my kids are watching videos or just doing assignments. I don't understand what, what the expectation is for Wednesday virtual learning is. I'd like to see some consistency there. I expected on a Wednesday, when everybody is home, both cohorts are home, and teachers have the ability to conduct virtual learning, that there would be Google meets for every single period.
Ms. Parker, just finish up your thought. You're running close on time.
I don't understand what it is. I've been told that email is qualified as virtual learning. That, that's not acceptable in my, in my mind. So I'd like to see Google meets if we're going to continue with this hybrid model. I'd like to see very clear-cut expectations and definitions of what virtual learning means, especially as it relates to when, on Wednesdays, if we're going to continue in that model. So I look very forward to the reboot process that's supposed to be coming out this week. Thank you again for all the effort. Happy to help where I can.
Thank you, Ms. Parker, for your comment. You've reached your time limit, but thank you for calling in. I understand Mr. Thomas French is back on, 5084.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. I'm calling to remind you guys of your role as elected officials. It's not to dictate to the town what you think is right for our schools. It's to facilitate the wishes of the town. You don't work for the teachers. You don't work for anyone else. You work for the taxpayers of this town. And very rarely is there a 90% consensus on anything, on any view ever, but there's a 90% consensus from parents in this town that they want the schools open full-time. I don't care about your opinions on COVID or your interpretations of data that you're not qualified to interpret. The only data you need to be concerned with is that 90% of Fairfield parents want their kids back full-time. So you need to work 100% of your effort towards facilitating that return to school, and stop sending out data and charts about why you can't do that, and start sending out ways that you are going to do that. Get our kids back to school. Parents are breaking down. The children are being harmed mentally, and it's your fault. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Melissa Miller, I think is back on the line, 1733.
Hi, I just, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hi. I just actually wanted to thank you. In converse of that argument, I have had a family member, seven-year-old healthy niece who had COVID and was in the ICU for a whole entire week, so I want to thank the board for using the data and the numbers. I support that. I just think that if there's ways that we can facilitate us getting through this, through this hump and trying to make sure that parents that are desperate, that they have their needs met, I think not focusing on the model per se, but focusing on the education, I think. I am one of the parents who did say that I was going to send my, my child back in person, but I would potentially withdraw my kid if the numbers are bad and the schools were still open. So I think there's a lot of different ways to look at the issue, and I, and I thank the board and the superintendent for looking at the data and using a metric. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your call, and I hope your niece is okay. So there were a number of people that were registered we didn't connect with. I'm just going to run, I'm just checking with our tech. No one else is on the line right now, is that correct?
No other new callers. We have a lot of callers that called in, but they didn't call in with the number that matched the sign-in sheet.
Okay, I'm going to read through the names that are on the list to see if anybody that's on the list is on the call with a different number, and if they are, they can, you know, just speak up. Katie.
Unmute them so they can call out saying that they are on the call.
Yes, why don't you, thank you. Why don't you just unmute everybody right now? And I ask, I ask the public to please, even though you're unmuted, to please not speak up. We are trusting that everybody wants this process to continue. Katie Flynn. Kelly McGinnis. Ms. McGinnis. Irene Sakara. David Sanok. Andrew Grayson. Elizabeth Vigneux. Brittany Sansone. Christopher Benedetto. Noreen Zano. Matthew Gelb. Elizabeth Snyder. Julie Shepro. Carrie Levey. No one spoke up, so I'm going to ask that you mute all callers again. Thank you.
Well, fine.
On behalf of the board, I would like to thank everybody who took the time to register and to call in for this meeting. I'm sorry if people tried to call in and couldn't connect due to technical difficulties. We'll keep on trying to improve this process in the future, but for a first time, I think it went pretty well. It's a trial run. I also want to thank Marco, our tech support here, for facilitating this, and the guys at Fair TV that are, that are here early to make it happen. And with that, I would like a motion to adjourn this special meeting. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor. We adjourn. For the public, our regular meeting starts at 8:00. Please tune in, and maybe we can address some of the questions you had.